Good afternoon, everybody. Can we kindly settle down? We're just about to begin our afternoon session. Thank you for coming back. Can I ask you again to please rise as the panel come through? And you can sit down at the end of that. Not yet, not yet. Please rise. Please be seated. Mr. Chifuta will carry on with the rest of the program for the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant Program Director. Good afternoon. Molweni. Now we're at the point where we open up the floor for inputs. What we should do is that we don't have the whole day. When I say "we don't," I don't mean us from the side of the panel. I mean those who have to travel to their respective regions and so on. And so we'll request that we also maximize on writing our inputs and submitting it to the tables. So that if you have not spoken but your idea is being submitted, even those that will speak and think that later on they can write up something, you can still submit those inputs in writing. I'm going to identify five hands from this side. I will start with number one, two, three. Please come to the mic. Four, and then Sisi with the blue shirt, five. You see, I noted five hands and there are more than five people in the queue. My humble request is that those who have spoken must give new people an opportunity to speak, please. If we have time, we'll come back. I'm humbly requesting. Sisi with the blue shirt, come please. So I already have six, so I'm going to pass this side and come to this side until there are six that side. I'm going to identify five. As I call you, you come to the mic. I'm going to start with number one. Number two. Number three. Sisi with the jean, number four. Next to you, number five. Let's start with those hands. Number one from this side can start until we have five people in this side. Please introduce yourself and then you make the point.
My name is Donna Bonagela-Masago from First Laura South 47 from Youth Sector. Mine will be on land. Let's give land to the home. Secure the title to the people. Allow home building without a red tape. Transfer Superflora State land to the homeless on one family, one plot basis. After 1910, Black South African was systemically deprived of property right inland. Now that this right has been restored, most are too poor to buy property. To alleviate this Superflora State, land should be distributed to the homeless free of charge. Method. For argument's sake, five hectares could be given to each land, landless rural family, and 200 square meters to each own house, own family. Plot should be defined and allocated using a simple locos from a registration. Costly severe, these registration requirements should be dispensed with benefit and immediate delivery of land worth of estimated 5,000 to 10,000 to every homeless family. An end to a land invasion and uncontrolled squatter settlement. Rapid amelioration of the housing crisis. Upgrade title to land. Upgrade title to land. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do I adjust this?
Can someone help us adjust the mic, please?
Is it okay now? Am I audible enough? You guys want to hear me? As well. I'm trying to get your attention from group number one, which talks to inequality, poverty, unemployment. Inequality. I'm trying to get your attention from the lowest level government. I'm trying to get your attention. Our issues, municipal services, at hand, we're dealing with costs, discriminatory laws or bylaws. Where above all, above all, we are expected to pay or to prepay for water and money. Our money is not available in electricity. We are prepaying on those whilst those coming from the rich communities, born of a patala after having used their service. That becomes a challenge, my bylaws, over municipal authority. They promote poverty by expecting those who are coming from poor communities to prepay for our money, whereas those who are, who can afford, born, they can wait for 30 days before they pay for their service. We must pay now before we get the service. That becomes a challenge. But let's see, I'm talking about unemployment. Our policies, our act, our call, that deal with issues, the labor, seem to be doing well. But the challenge, our goal is to implement it where those who are charged with the responsibility of making sure, these acts are working for us, seem not to be doing their part. Now, let us look at the policy that talks to essential supply database, where above and to, also my business, above and down, the buyer was, sometimes, would buy again, good central supply database and source out our tender documents for free. Now, that only applies at national level. Small business, we are expected to pay a tender document ranging from 5,000 rand to 1,000 rand. Sometimes, they don't have any. It's true, but they don't have any. So perhaps if they can also extend that policy, here in Zalo, we are going to apply it from province, like municipal authority, our tender documents are be accessible to central supply database, which is for free. I'm going to explain this, so I'm trying to issue here tendering. For small businesses, it tendering seems to still be favoring the big businesses. Because when you tender as a small business, you are expected to provide a check record. Only now. The only check record on now, if Obusevenzela or the big companies. That's the only check record you know, Obusevenzela, you have the necessary skill. But as a new company, you don't have that skill and you don't have that check record. So I'm a small business, but we are still favorable because of this red tape, we still favor the big companies when it comes to tendering. So we still want to see, we don't have gap, we are still favorable. We are not ready, at least, by the way, we are not ready. Now, we are not calling, we are not having a check record. Let them produce proof, we are not ready, Obusevenzela, we are not ready. Not as a company, but as individuals or founder members of those particular companies. We are issuing internship. Now, we have above unscrupulous business people or employers out there who seems to be also preying on our gaps from our policies, government. Where they now prefer to go on internships, avoiding to employ our youth on full-time basis to avoid paying for all the benefits associated with full employment. Where we talk of keeping or taking our youth on internships on a period of 12 months. But by recycling, every 12 months, they get new internships. In that way, they avoid employing our youth on a full-time basis. So we think we need to close the gap where they will be monitored. Our companies don't abuse our youth by taking them only for 12 months under internship without any prospect of getting full-time employment. Then, so we are going to issue a RPL. There is a policy known as irrecognition of prior learning. This policy, I'm not sure under which act it belongs, but it sought to address our skills which a person would have obtained through informal training. Now, that in government is not practice. Because if we want to earn any informal qualification, got to earn any skill through informal training, I go into through advertisement of that particular post, I think. More now, intelligence, we are not ready, we are not ready. They only talk about qualifications plus five years' experience, which doesn't exist. So there should be a way of closing the gap between the RPL, which talks to informal training and formal training in terms of qualifications. So if only we can close it, I'm not sure where it falls in all the acts which we have. I'm trying to get your attention.
Thank you.
I'm Masia Ari.
Enda.
I'm Fito Masumjerele. Then, the default case are things like wage, inequality, poverty, and what? First, I will start with poverty and access to basic services. If we look here in South Africa this time, we've got a shortage of water. So, yes, we have done things like meter and something in order to save water, but that one is not enough. I want to say to the panel, we need strong evaluation and monitoring team, which is going to deal with service delivered to the community. First of all, we need to apply the bore holes to make bore holes all over to the country, to our communities, and put tanks in order so that we must try to minimize water shortages. If we can apply that and implement that on bore holes and tanks, things will be fine. In terms of health, we've got problems in terms of health. We don't have resources at our hospitals. Shortages of machines, X-rays, machines which backup in breathing, in intensive care. We've got that shortages. That is why we find that we don't have quality services of health at our society. We don't have, in clinics, we've got shortages of nurses and doctors. People are working under pressure. That's why we find that there are a lot of mistakes in terms of on the health department. It going back to the government, where people are suing government a lot of money. Let us go and employ staff. In a government department, there is a lot of shortage of staffs. And again, in terms of maintenance, maintaining the hospitals, hey, it's bad. Because there are nickages, blocked switches and everything. We don't have clean hospitals and clinics. All over, all over South Africa. Let us apply. You go to the clinic or to the hospital, you get treatment, but there is no medication. These are the basic services which people. Another thing, our government are bullish labor brokers. How can you hire a nurse or a doctor for temporal things? The children, they are not benefiting on this out. Why they don't benefit? I need strong monitoring and quality testing to the local government of the city of Tobe. But people in Kiltown, they must head out. Wage is a concern. This year, we've got a problem. If we look now, the living, the according to the South African, what was? The living wage is 5,000. If you look now, 2,000 rand is for food, on the household. We don't got 3,000 or 5,000, which is the proposed salary. It's not enough. If 2,000 is only eligible for for households, for food. What about the basic services, like water, electricity, school uniform, for transport, or going to work? Let us try to do things equally and that people are labor brokers. They are owing by people who are on the government's budget. At the end, when we get employed, we don't get benefits, no patient, no worker, no nothing. At the end, when the job is finished, you find that you're not going to live on. So people, let's try to live to make sure that the panel, labor brokers are bullish labor brokers. Hire workers and get in the PSL of 5,000 once. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Trans Tosa from South Africa. I'm here to talk about two sanitary pads. And we have all, all the young women of South Africa. As you can see, there are kids who live in a they can't access the facility such as sanitary pads. As the health department, who is still on duty, is they should be for sanitary pads, they will be as a for if they to all the young women. Especially those who are in the sanitary pads are the basics of all young women. Thank you. Especially my daughters. My daughters are highly high less have my children and so this is the problem. And if so this is the problem. Also, if in the our but but and if the government tries to take all the people but also but who but and the so if there's it is cost also like units but also the and but they so then um it and it it but and but then please there are no unions it who and that's why at the end of the it's not this is the unit unit and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, come this side.
So in the it here and the other Wednesday and appointment again you may this Wednesday but and yeah to me so okay you material funding, you material funding if funding any because sneaking you must now got you sell a pack in a certain percent. But all the good man government again certain percent you more by so but but so now so but so this is a you material funding it's totally and they entrusted us you now and then it's is as as so
They end up resorting into sex work. So, Sinama Organisation, this is the Benza now. This organisation is sweat. Sweat is a sex workers education and advocacy team. And we also have this song. This song is like your cosatu. It is like your sato. This song is a movement by sex workers for sex workers whereby, and it, remember, tinaglomchab, glomchab espila gue foot. Abandabani zaba funu, bonale sex work, baibona es immoral. Ba libel ba la, reality is, it mostly, juhauzaz na oban. So, uki sweat ilimale sex work. So, ufun danje, ufuni sweat ilimale sex work. Umdanakusa houten omazwenzadun, but it's still society immoral. These are the organisations in Zokbalela zona. As the Benza all around houting. We cater for houting, we cater for Limpombo, we cater for Northwest. We also cater for KZN. We have this song, which is a sex workers movement. We have Women's Legal Centre, which is a non-governmental organisation. And we also, that only deals with women, who are sex workers and women who are not sex workers. Then we give legal advice. We also litigate on, we have litigation matters that we stand on. And we also have EE Vets Protective and Health Institute. That deals with only sex workers. Remember, kuma public sectors, ama sex worker would go to a public sector and e-community ngani and it, uyazi obana, uma ero botine tili. The next thing, uzo complain obana, namchane, une STI. Sasa ubuyela foot une STI, ngenymin ubuyela foot une STI. Then, sebe amcheba waklunda oley. Kuma police station, this is the same thing, it trend eh one le. This is very emotional, I know. Sinaya footi organisation, eh, P H R U, which is based in eh, 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 Para. Sinasonga, singa songa gender justice, na yo yasnetisa, ukulue la ama humans rights violation. We also have E Lifeline for ama trauma, because remember ama sex workers lan, asu akui ma different backgrounds. Banes ndo esibachukumeza ngapakati kubosu. E Lifeline, this is where it comes handy. Ukubagnata baba sise, nge counselling, like, no more trauma bayabagnata kunja. Sinangobile footis benem tusimpilo. These are the organisations that are working very handy to cater for ama sex workers around houting. Criminalisation and regulation. This refers to the sexual act, Sexual Act Twenty Three of nineteen fifty seven. That is the, that is the act in fifty nine years old. This act was registered and implemented in the apartheid era. That was fifty nine years old. Is ndo ziyachinja, umchlabu yachinja, les ndo zokuwenzas, ziyachinja goko. We then called the High Panel to review, to review this old law and implement. Therefore, it gives the public, this law that I'm talking about, it gives the public and the police powers to violate sex workers' rights. Remember, these sex workers are also human. They have a right to trade. This law must be repelled. This will help South Africa to achieve cohesion. This will also help to remove stigma associated with sex work. And it will also assist with the reduction of HIV among sex workers. In that, sex workers will be now able to access healthcare and services without, and healthcare services without fear of prejudice. Police law enforcement and justice. In many places, sex workers experience arbitrary arrest, abuse harassment, extortion from the police officers that are meant to make sure that we are safe in this country. Police officials often demand free sexual services, when, free sexual services when sex workers are detained. And they shambok, they brutally shambok. We have cases here in the Johannesburg CBD, that ladies were shamboked and they were not doing anything because they know that there is the room or there is the street where sex workers sell. The law enforcement, abainkele bassebenzanga, iloyabo, it's not right. There's no one o-fanela betwe, ngoba wenzayindwe rongo. Nobakutua une crime, ukulela, is even mapaki wonke glle houtinglin, alkolonya upe boys. Amapaki wonke, lana bayazi oban dabateng salama drugs, ngamanajeriya. What is the police doing? Abenz nix instead, bachi wali maleli na lamanajeriya. Manela, and it take, and it satcho na namchane diti, le e-profession ibonwa es immoral. And it, sipinde sidion goku, lama fazla, aba abonza, abandwana, iman kaya. Bapinde bafika ma polis, akutuwe, vlimilenza, sox pepper spray, kwenza lina sukwa susebenza namchanch. That is a human rights violation. Lama polis alana, afuni mali, ngabo oban dasitemele kuboba nasukuzelikle glomchab. Bafuni mali, glamandamasan, oganyi, bafune e-free sex, ngoba basu, ba teminsumba basu puma. That is immoral profession, and it.
In conclusion.
No, no, before I continue, sir, I need to quickly finish this. I know this is a very emotional thing, but I need to quickly finish this. Please let me. Sex workers often cannot access equal protection from the law enforcement or justice when they report offences committed against them, such as violence, rape or robbery. Sex workers who are brave to stand firmly to report these matters, na defiga e-police station. They are either made a laughingstock in my police station or they are detained or being, or they are profiled. Women's Legal Centre, we have E Women's Legal Centre to advance sex workers' rights and make sure that women in general and sex workers' rights are not violated. We also have Sweat to advocate for decriminalisation of sex work. I repeat, we demand full decriminalisation of sex work. And we have food. Sex workers face a critical stigma and discrimination, decriminalisation, discrimination in the public sector. Kuma hospital, which results them not to go to the hospital or resorting to a non-governmental organisation. Eh, benzenis bali le ekaleni. These organisations are doing a great job in making sure that wonke umundu yalfuma na ungeto, for impilo zabo. And they need ama funding because abaguazu figeleleku zinndau, eh, zikwazi o government, ba maga figeleleku, sitayela nisipandi lama. Thank you very much.
Sanbonani, nguli sa balon pegi, nompaka tuonke. Okuluma ukrizintudun, lovobuya eh broncospray. Eh swani footi energy, deka duxu ngaba mpin. Siyakala baba mchante, strela gue, kutu, keuze, uzo, uzo pegali project. Ilonchengez fourteen zika, Aprili, gotwa. Ibona gale ngatina, hundred years eh, ifile, iya kiwa, say ifile. And then, sinengkinga, galakutini si zenu government. And basi ngatka, lukitinstumela, bantwaka maspala, ngoba ngibula, basmo shayo. Abasabenza eh swani. Eh, si twenty five beneficial, si psung. Eh, sina ma ooga eh twenty five, nama tunnel eh twenty five. Siyachala aguna manzi, yonkin to ishile ngapakati kua matanel, may langalishisa. sina ma oowe, ane inkuku ngapakati. Eh swani, it is nigeza, ama, ama chule eh two thousand, eh, two thousand five hundred. Gotwa basnigeza one hundred and fifty. So, batisingeni, lukla ma setlile, singeni giho, setlil one, sezaga, setlil two sezaga, setlil three. Eh, ku setlil two, min. Basnigin ama chule ndogutla, bashiya pakati. Is inkuku na, sezakile, sezakela baba mchante, uzuzozlamlela, guze wena ngenyama. Kungezumtuswenzese swana, ngoba ngibaba, skendezilai. Kona manje siyasebenza, batiskipo mate di two thousand. Kumelu kutu mate di two thousand, abuya eh swani. Bata zanki baschele, last year, ma samba, siyakuma training. Bayabuya, bati manje, ma singa ekipi te di two thousand. Baskipo nyagoza ujanuar. Siyapuma eh lap, eh, singeni kona, basfage koda, guna ma twenty eh, five houses. And then, ma batele lapo, bati gitie. Tisemba kune mala bakona, la baba fage imali, yokutiba thola manje ama chwene. Bazutwa di mali. Tinazinga gafagi siyaki shu. And footi ma setisprela ama taclititi, abafuni na, abati ndawe eh swani. Zitiganjan, ngoba tinansabenza, zama aydi wetu. Lapo eh swani, manje kona manje, nfunu kusipama taclititi, nitispumi. Si puma ganja, eh, benkela, nobunye footi baba, uzuzoznay dagaku. Skala gunga tumeli boonke, ngoba omunye spulala eh usabenza pakati swani. Hambsana na ilomlungu ya spulala, lo se, ya spulan. Lumlungu namangati, kipana ma twenty three thousand, asasunuguti one. Abaspraza, ngena babuza, ngati minasesi. Eh ya nimte di two thousand, deniti niya ifun. Ngabe nasela from the start, last year, jo kuma nbi eh, 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 training. Manzo kalukfagama chwane, si funa mate di two thousand, kuti nipatala eh rent. Eh ju, laudala kon, ne oowe, ne channel eh lautala kon. Gotwa azankangpendu, lazankangipendu. Ma kete lapo gage, azanki, na ti todaya basniginpendu, boona kuzela, kutu bazuna mate di two thousand. And ina, olevatenye, tutu, saké, umsabenza for eh, zizingani, for omunye pakati, ostrakla eh, emakai. Gotwa namsha, bati talukuti, baskoshu nyagoza, manga basfage imali, bazuna te di two thousand. Kumnyama, kubofu. Nkale footi, kuti, nkaile kuti, ni, nipegelinda, baza, ma social weka. Ma social weka kaya nzu, umsabenza wa. Uya yane skalo sakho, abasta cheli entogo. Uwa slala, atatiskatsake, ubuyelu, ubuyelu zukivape. Nkale footi, nepenchini aboko, ngoba ngmelena aboko. Aboko, bayas traki la, ngomkholo. Baya hamba, me miskatisite, ema shop right, ba melo umtene. Bema, uzu bonkoko, akolapsa, ngommelu umtene. Benkela, lukitiniglungu, selogo, ngabon.
Oh, ladies and gentlemen. Our panel, Mr. Mutlante, sorry. Eh, Program Director, consider yourself treated. Eh, I'm here to speak about National Development Agency Act, combined with National Sports and Recreation Act. Now, mutata borre unanlebo, na ko, pliki, kekina tsepochwene, by the way, eh, ketlaka kopoki, section five of Regifarm. Our youth don't have hobbies nowadays. We don't have hobbies, why? Because drugs are easy to get. Our police officers are the delivery boys of drugs. We experience, eh, young people being, young people are using drugs because they are easy to get. Young people are, their hobbies are not to smoke. We are not considered at all. Our government neglect us. We would like to plead with you. Please help us get rid of these drug, eh, drug dealers. These drug dealers eh, are the, kinchozey longre. Di rechatela ha hole, and ikotatela di chatelezele, future of South Africa. Who is going to rule in the near future if nowadays eh, renanlebo nyaope boys fail? Who is going to rule in the near future nowadays? Ah, resnadi hobbies eh, the hobbies are rona elo husuba, honwa, no jadi drugs. Please help us to get rid of these drug dealers. Please help us to create, eh, there are many categories under sports. We can create many categories, in fact, there is many categories under sports whereby we don't have the facilities to, eh, hotel this as sport pay. So, renreko pa hole, na eh, our panel, our former president, Mr. Mutlante, sir. Eh, please use your, 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 your name to, kalemasichaba. Eh, please. Because nowadays eh, drugs is now the hobby. We now use drugs as a hobby, it's our sports, it's our entertainment, it's our everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I, I akpaka misantla, akpaka mumt, akpaka mumlo. Eh, I will take the two ladies and I have to take one at the back. No, 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 no. No, please sit down, please sit down. Sesipetega, sesekreba, please, everyone, please sit down. I mean, as presidents, if you do not cooperate, I move to the next side. I've not noted anyone this side. I've not noted anyone, I don't expect anyone in the queue. Please, with greatest of respect, I don't expect anyone in the queue. I've not noted any hand. No, regardless of the condition, I've not noted anyone. I don't expect anyone in the queue. Can we please sit down and raise our hands? Because it would be unfair that we always start from the front, moving backward. Those people who are at the back are equally part of the meeting. They can't be ignored as well. Let's try this side. Sisi with red at the back, please come to the, no.
He can't raise his hand, sorry.
Mama, please, may I kindly request that you sit down until I identify his hand.
With due respect, with due respect.
Mama, with greatest of respect, I will request Nomkosie to come and listen to you so that it does not delay the process of inputs.
He can't raise his hand, he's got no limbs.
Mama, I'm going to, I'm going to note and give him, please. In a meeting, we raise a hand, not a voice. In that condition, in that, in that circumstance, we are going to allow a colleague to come and listen. We're not going to, we're not going to discriminate against him. I fully take that point, ma. Thank you very much for coming, Sisi. There's Sisi with red and a red eh duk. May I, may I go to the far left with a gentleman in a check shirt? May I identify three hands this side? Good people, let's do this. Let's allow the three, and it, we identified five before. For as long as we have time, it's all yours to speak. I think the lesser we make the process, the more time we'll have to speak. May we identify three hands this side? We will start at the back. Sisi with a white jersey, please come to the mic. May I invite Orasta with a blue and a white collar, please come to the four. May I invite Sisi with black and white, please come to the four. Those are the three three, we will still take more. Let's invite the first one to, to address.
Thank you, Program Director. Eh, thank you, Program Director. Yeah, my name is Sonia Mabolawa, from Amanskral Temba Swani. Eh, I'm representing CPF's, Zogo Temba, Amanskral. I will speak on just few sentences on social cohesion and nation building. Eh, source of intentions in my province are the following. The imbalances in terms of countries' wealth. The poor are more poorer and the richer getting richer. Therefore, I recommend on that, let us implement what is being said by Freedom Charter. Eh, two, inequalities in terms of gender balances. Yes, the government is doing well. We can see fifty fifty, eh, parliamentary, national legislature, but in other stakeholders like private sector, it's still struggling. With, I therefore recommend that eh, monitoring systems. Faneles greenies eh, because of, I can see that they are weak if they are there. Little has been done on what is being said on seventeen of twenty thirteen. Eh, I also recommend that, let be there, education and proper monitoring and/or giving information to communities. I want also to suggest that, because of, I've seen in the guidelines that we were given in terms of these processes, there was nothing about safety and security. As community policing forums, eh, we are the most vulnerable eh people because of eh, we are doing the, the work that is dangerous. Eh, we are volunteers, my president. We are volunteers that are getting nothing because of, we've got those eh, patrola systems. We are eh, the community, re-shirali zascha, but we are getting nothing thereafter. Eh, the key thing that makes me to raise this is because of eh, poverty, it causes crime. There are a lot of elements that causes crime. Eh, all those things that causes crime. Renagoma felung, retzanna, kekurri zwa, gadi programs. Whereas, resnan, we, we, I have nothing. So, my point eh, that I want to make, I want to suggest that you review the Constitution on Safety and Security or Police Service Act so that eh, these CPF's must be looked at. Thank you, Chair.
We now to hand. Chairperson, with due respect.
My dear brother.
We, we have one of us who is unable to be heard or seen because of his condition.
Yes.
We, we have made our request to the marshals to assist and that has just gone unattended to. Can we make a plea again to please give our gentleman an opportunity to say his piece and?
Is it the gentleman who's sitting here?
The gentleman.
No, that is long resolved.
Come again?
That is long resolved.
It's resolved?
That is long resolved, yes, thank you very much. Kobama ma?
Yeebo sanbonani. On, on bingalela ago, gusara masangu, o, o zalua wa jian. Ngetela ukti, tinale ngivela eh, eh, eh broncospray. Eh broncospray, abandu, abashesi eh plasi ni from nineteen fifty nine, from nineteen fifty two, sorry to say fifty nine, abashesi from fifty two.
Eh, kamalamingelia smope, angwaya eh broncospray. Eh, inkinga enkayo, enkakela, kuti, nislungi se leo na, baba mchante. Eh, inkingas nayo, kuti, ama poisa wase broncospray, awa nzu umsabenza, awa njele fani. In Kinaesnayo, we see a bronchospaide who is working on the work. In Kinaesla, we see a bronchospaide, in Kinae, we see a matrax. And the matrax are taking over through our community and destroying young people's life. So, we're going to see in the clinic, we see a matrax who is working on the work. In our community, we are struggling, Amans, Amans, we have to go in. And through that, we see a bronchospaide who is working on the work.
Yes, Sambo Nani, I'm in Dini. I'm going to say about Epi Tour. In the government, we have to see. It is a pity. You have to go. We're going to see a band who are helping us. So far, it's Sasa, it's Kipar, it's Grandin Eighty. We told them sixteen. As I said, I'm young. So, I want to tell you, sixteen one. It's three fifty, they are keeping it, it's Sasa, it's three fifty. It's nine o'clock. We're going to see a toilet, we're going to see a toilet, we're going to see a toilet. And we're going to see the government, we're going to see the government. I'm afraid it's Sasa. I get to see the world, I'm going to see it, I'm going to see it all month, I see it. And when you see it, it's big. We're going to see the government, we're going to see the government. It is a pity, it's a pity, I find. You have to go. Example, the RDP, the government is going to kill. But into, we're going to see. I'm going to see we operate. We're going to see. It's window, it's window, it's zoom, we're going to see. We're going to see, we're going to see. See, I'm going to see the government, the RDP. I'm happy to see it, we're going to see it, we're going to see it. It will see, I'm not pleased, we're going to see it. We're going to see, we're going to see. It starts. On the event, it's a humble. I'm going to see, I'm going to see. Maskebela, Hamateks. As late as the event, we're going to see.